Hold on just a second, guys. I'm having a little technical difficulty.
You have to go to the laptop that the planning commission has and make sure they're unmuted there.
Okay.
Chris, can you hear us now?
Yes. Just a reminder to turn on your microphones when you want to speak.
Okay, make sure and turn on the microphone and we should be good to go.
Rochelle, staff report.
Okay. Sorry, it's hard to do all these things at one time now. So tonight we have before you one item and the item is approval of a planning commission resolution 1013 2028. It's approving an ordinance amending section seventeen point six oh four oh oh four oh uses and permitted zone, specific zones. And it's all related to cannabis, the changes that are being made. We do have the city administrator on a call and so I know that she will be commenting. And we also have the city attorney, Nubia Goldstein, available as well. Both are here with us this evening via Zoom. The only item that the planning commission is considering are the changes to chapter seventeen, zoning ordinance. We have also included here in the packet for you the changes that are made to the cannabis regulations for the city. And that all occurs in chapter six, eight point three six. Again, that's for information for you guys only to give you the background. But what we're considering tonight is the changes to the zoning ordinance because those are under the purview of the planning commission. The planning commission will be making a recommendation to the council via the resolution. And let me see if, Mary Rose, are you online?
I am here. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I apologize for not being there in person. So Rochelle, did the council, or excuse me, did the planning commissioners have the chance to receive the PowerPoint presentation that I made available to them?
Yes, they did.
Okay.
They all have it.
Okay, perfect. So again, Mary Rose Ruddy-Congas, city administrator for the city of Sonora. I apologize, I really apologize for not being there in person. I also sit on a school board. And so I'm getting ready to go into a school board meeting as well. But I wanted to make sure I ran through what is being presented before you. This was presented in draft format to our city council on September twenty first. And if you flipped to page two of the PowerPoint, it just gives a brief background on Prop sixty four, your AMWA or adult use of marijuana act. And that act was passed in November of two thousand and sixteen. It regulates non-medical cannabis. It was passed by the voters. It was actually passed by a majority of voters in the city of Sonora as well. And it created non-medical use of legalization of non-medical use of cannabis by persons twenty-one years of older or older. And personal cultivation of six plants for personal use. It created also a statutory or a regulatory and licensing system for the commercial cultivation, testing and distribution of non-medicinal cannabis and the manufacturing of non-medicinal cannabis products. And allows us as local governments to prohibit or regulate and license commercial non-medicinal cannabis. So if you switch to the next page, it's just a brief look at where we're at in the city of Sonora in terms of regulating cannabis use. Currently, in the city of Sonora, we allow for the use of medicinal cannabis through a permit process of medicinal dispensaries. So in January of two thousand and eighteen, the city council approved an ordinance that allowed for the establishment of a structure to regulate all cannabis businesses in the city. And it allowed for your type M licensure pilot program. And it allowed for the city to enter into two development agreements with two separate medicinal cannabis businesses. One of which we have a retail medicinal retail business that is fully operational and compliant with city rules and regulations. We have an additional cannabis business that is in the process of developing their business through. They brought a building downtown, there need to do construction on that building and so forth in order for that business to get up and running. But we do have a development agreement with that second business. It's just not open, open and operational at the moment. So currently, the city allows for two development agreements for medicinal cannabis only. The city council directed staff to bring back an ordinance that allow, that would allow for the use of recreational cannabis. And this next page, I want to go over with you what that ordinance looks like. What is before you is to give your recommendation on title seventeen, the zoning title to allow for the use of recreational cannabis. Although I'm also going to go over title eight point three six with you, although you're not asking, we're not asking for your recommendation on that title just for title seventeen point six zero point zero four zero. And currently, as we said, we're under a pilot program for dispensaries and retail. The new ordinance would allow for medicinal and recreational. It would also authorize the city of Sonora to enter into three separate business permits to be allowed under medicinal or recreational cannabis dispensary or retail. And it sets the same in, the same exact prohibitions that the previous ordinance or current ordinance allows. Which is they're prohibited from operating within six hundred feet of a school, youth center, daycare, church or park. And you're allowed to operate within the, the commercial CO and C and CG and also our industrial ML zone. This new ordinance would also allow for recreational and medicinal cannabis from a manufacturing standpoint and allow for volatile and non-volatile businesses to be permitted under this ordinance. And it would expand the zoning of where those types of manufacturing businesses could operate. So currently, under the current ordinance, we only allow for medicinal manufacturing, although we do not have a development agreement for manufacturing at this point. This new ordinance would allow for manufacturing to be allowed in not only your industrial zones, but be allowed in your commercial C zones as well. With an exemption of not allowing that to happen within our downtown Zone A region. It also expands cannabis testing to allow for adult use recreational testing as well. And again, expanding to your C zone instead of just your light industrial, which is allowable currently under the current ordinance. And it also restricts cultivation like the current ordinance. So the new ordinance does not allow for any cultivation within the city of Sonora. But however, we as a city cannot limit the total number of plants allowable per, per residence. So we still have to allow for that six plants per resident and all outdoor cultivation would be prohibited at this point. So it would allow additionally cannabis and testing permits to be expanded to three permits as well under each of those types of permits. So three permits for dispensary and retail, three permits for manufacturing and three permits for testing and no cultivation at this time in the city of Sonora. That last page of your PowerPoint presentation addresses the timeline in which the city council is looking at an ordinance to be, to come before them and potentially be approved by the city council. As you can tell, on September twenty first, we presented the draft to the council. They were in agreement with that draft. So today we are presenting this ordinance to the planning commission for your recommendation. If the, the planning commission gives the recommendation to the city council, we will bring back the ordinance for its first reading on November second with a possible second reading and adoption on November sixteenth and the ordinance to take full effect in December of two thousand and twenty. So at this time, I am here to answer any questions that you might have and I apologize for, again, for not being there in person. And hopefully I didn't rush through any of the elements in the zoning. And also our city attorney, Nubia Goldstein, is also on the phone if you have any additional questions.
Yes, Mary Rose, this is Chris and I have a couple of questions of you. Can you hear me okay?
I can.
So you did clarify and I appreciate your, your, your brief summary and overview of this whole ordinance and what we're faced with tonight. So the potential is there with any adoption of the three business, business cannabis business operations, whether they be medicinal or recreational, the potential is there to have three testing labs and three manufacturing sites within the city under those zoning guidelines.
Yes, sir. That's what this new ordinance, what new ordinance would allow. It would be three permits for manufacturing and additional three permits for testing.
So that the ordinance that we're, we currently enjoy, that we have in place provides for two testing sites and two manufacturing in addition to two medical dispensaries, correct?
That's correct. The council's direction was to bring back an ordinance that increased the total number of permits from two to three.
Okay, I'm curious, what has spawned this request to expand this to recreational? Is there an applicant that chooses to do that?
There is, but there's also, you know, in looking at diversifying city revenues. And we know that right now, under the medicinal use of cannabis, although we've, we've had a good relationship with our current business owner that is, is operating within the city of Sonora. And we've been able to maintain a positive relationship with him because this is a pilot program at the moment. The city of Sonora has the ability to increase its city revenues by allowing for the use of recreational adult use cannabis. In the term of the way that the law reads, for medicinal cannabis, the city cannot collect any sales tax on that, on those sales. So we do receive a public benefit fee through the, through the business owner. However, we do not collect, collect city sales tax and that's a prohibition in the Prop sixty four as it's read. If we were to allow, if, if the planning commission recommends and the city council approves, the city council or the city of Sonora would still be allowed to collect that public benefit fee. But we would also start seeing the benefit of collection of city sales tax revenue. Our city sales tax would now be attributable to those purchases that are made for recreational cannabis only and not medicinal.
So back to my, back to my question, what has, I'm assuming then that what has spawned this is that there has been an applicant or a party of interest in opening a recreational business and the city is interested in getting that revenue.
Yes, sir. We actually had quite a number of businesses contact us in regards to not only medicinal cannabis, but recreational cannabis as well. I would say since I've been with the city of Sonora since February, I've received at least maybe ten inquiries on potential businesses within the city of Sonora for cannabis. And you know, as far as what we, we learned from the previous or the current ordinance, as far as looking at it from a pilot program. I know the council wanted to look at whether or not any type of recreational cannabis would be doable, so to speak. And so that is why they authorized a pilot program. We have been able to see that this pilot program has been somewhat, I would say, successful. The business owner is in compliance. We are receiving additional city revenues from that. And this would just then expand upon those revenues for the city of Sonora.
If we expanded to recreational for a third permit, can they, can that recreational dispensary operate from the same location as a medical dispensary?
They could. So if you're, if a, if a business is asking for to expand upon their, let's just say, let's put, so our current business owner is Hazy Bulldog, Jeff Mujo. And he currently does medicinal cannabis sales. If he were to apply for recreational, he could still continue to do both medicinal and recreational out of his dispensary. And that would, that would be one permit, that would be one permit considered, one permit holder within the city of Sonora. So he would be authorized to do both medicinal and recreational and he would be considered one of the permit holders for the city.
So then there's the potential for another recreational dispensary to apply for a permit in addition to the one that hasn't developed his property yet. Is that right?
That is correct. And it is our understanding that the, the additional business that is currently going through the construction phase to get his business up and running is also interested in recreational as well. So it is our understanding that he could potentially not only, you know, just do medicinal cannabis, but he would apply potentially for recreational as well.
Could it be assumed then that the recreational cannabis business would be cannibalizing the medical business because it would provide more competition?
You know, I'm really not in the know of all the business. I will say that it makes sense from the fact that the majority now of transactions, cannabis transactions are being done from a recreational standpoint than a medicinal standpoint. And it's simply because, you know, at this point recreational cannabis is legal within the state of California. You don't need a doctor's note to obtain cannabis at this point. And so the ability to capitalize on recreational cannabis as opposed to just doing medicinal only would benefit, would benefit those businesses.
So to clarify, if a medical dispensary then also sought a permit for recreational and, and operated both businesses, both aspects of their cannabis trade under one permit, would the city enjoy a public benefit of, from both each entity and sales tax collected from the recreational marijuana?
That is correct. So we would be receiving the public benefit fee as well as the sales tax.
But the public benefit fee would be under the one permit for the enjoyment of both cannabis dispensary businesses?
And you know, I'm not, I don't know if that's something we're going to have to look at from a development agreement standpoint. I don't, staff has not worked out all the, the, the financial mechanism at this point. I know when we get the development agreements going, all of that will be hammered out as far as the collection of the public benefit fee and so forth. At this point, I'm not a hundred percent sure of what that would look like. I would assume though, that it would be, your public benefit fee would be the collection of the total gross sales from the one permit holder because it would be both medicinal and recreational. And then the city would collect their sales tax like we always do through the Department of Finance for their sales tax of recreation.
Mary Rose, I can, I can fill in a little bit on this item too, but you're, you're correct. So the way that the development agreement is currently structured for the two dispensaries that do have approvals is the model that the city would use moving forward. And the collection of the public benefit really applies to the entity and the permit holder per se. It's not really per individual dispensary because they're really operating one dispensary. They're just selling two different types of products.
Correct, yes.
And the idea, the other idea in amending the ordinance is to provide flexibility to these operators because initially, as Mary Rose stated, the council really wanted to test the waters with medicinal cannabis and they felt comfortable doing so. And we've moved forward in time. There's been, it's been a successful program to its current extent right now, but it is a little bit limited because it's only limited to medicinal. And as Mary Rose stated, the bulk of the sales that are happening across the state really relate to adult use of recreational cannabis. So this provides more flexibility to an operator who may be interested in doing one or both, one or the other or both. And it's really the same structure. So we wouldn't have a different agreement. It would be one agreement for each operator, each business holder with one public benefit amount. And as Mary Rose stated, it's, it's based off of gross receipts. So whatever they sell, you know, within a quarter, within a month, whatever it is, that's what's used to calculate their public benefit amount and what is owed to the city.
So to clarify, then the public benefit, if a dispensary sold recreational and medical cannabis, the public benefit would not double based on the two aspects of the type of cannabis that they're selling? It would just be the one dispensary paying the one public benefit to operate both types of businesses?
Yes, but it would be the total sales of both the medicinal and the recreational.
Right.
Okay, thank you. That answers most of my questions.
I have a question for Mary Rose, if it's okay. I'm John Richardson. I have a question. As of right now, the only real use of cannabis is for medical. We're not getting people coming in and buying it recreationally. It's just strictly for medical use. Is that correct?
That's correct. So right now, the city has prohibited the sale of adult use.
Right, for medical use only.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioners have questions for Mary Rose or city attorney?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else you want to add to that, Rochelle?
No, I'm, I'm good. Other than I think Mary Rose is going to be leaving us, correct, Mary Rose?
Yeah, I have a school meeting at six, so I apologize.
So if you have any questions that you need the city administrator answer, I would ask her now before we lose her because she's going to be moving on to another school board meeting. Does anybody, if anybody has a meeting and answer our question, Nubia will stay with us.
I don't have anything else. We're good. Thank you very much, Mary Rose. We appreciate the wealth of information.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And again, I apologize for not being there in person.
Mr. Chairman, we have several people on the line. And I have never hosted before, so please bear with me, folks. I think all that we need you to do is wave your hand. And then I should be able to see it on this little box that Chris has on here for me. And then I can let you access the meeting here one at a time. Please don't comment unless you're the one speaking, so I don't have to mute everybody. That would be very helpful. So I'm going to leave it to you to get that part started.
Okay, thank you, Rochelle. I'll open the public hearing now. I invite comments regarding this issue from any members of the public that would like to offer something up to the commission. And I request that you, first of all, keep your presentation in no more than three minutes, three minutes. And then also, if you find that any successive presenters or people that want to comment, don't repeat the previous people's remarks. Try and keep your ideas fresh so we get new information. Then we'll keep it moving along. Thank you. Who would like to go first?
Do I see, I don't, do I have any hands waving? Oh, I've got one waving at me because I'm not seeing it on here. Okay, so we're going to do it the old fashioned way. You guys look at me and wave and we'll, we'll go forward. So I'm going to start with.
Rochelle, Jeff, Jeff actually has his hand raised.
Yeah, I see that. And I see Anaya Kirk has his and it looks like David Winslow also has his hand raised. And I have a couple by phone, so I'm not seeing it come up on my screen. So, oh, I see it. It's on their picture. I'm sorry. I don't mean to be an idiot, you guys. I have never done this part before. So I see a hand. Let's go with Jeff Mujo first.
All right, is that working?
Yes.
Working.
Awesome. Well, thank you for allowing me the chance to speak here. I just wanted to comment on a couple of things. I'm definitely one of the operators that is in town with Bulldog Farms on the medical place in town currently. And as for why somebody like me would want to move to recreational, and I actually possibly started this conversation, is because everybody around us now is currently recreational and it's definitely pulling a little bit from our sales. And I can see those numbers in my books. Arnold just currently went in the last month or two. And, you know, down in Oakdale and a couple of other places, they've been recreational for a while. And they're starting to deliver into town as well. So they're starting to take a fair amount of business out of here due to that. So to stay competitive, the recreational is, I think, necessary. Not only that, but I do believe the state is going to write a law here within the next six months that will probably make that mandatory and get rid of the medical paradigm. It's just easier for the state to tax it that way. And I do believe that's the direction they're going personally. And then real quick, the other thing is, one of the suggestions I may make for the public benefit fee is currently, right now, it's, when you get up to two hundred thousand dollars in sales, it's a ten thousand dollars flat fee and then it's five percent from there up. If I had to throw a suggestion, I would just do a flat fee of five percent and then add the recreational sales on top of that. So that way, some of these new guys coming in that aren't going to have quite the, the sales that I do beginning, they won't have to put up the ten thousand dollars and only have to put up five percent if they only make, you know, a hundred thousand dollars in sales. Only have to pay, you know, that, that five percent of that as opposed to the ten thousand, two hundred thousand. So, okay, those are the things I wanted to add. And thank you guys very much. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. But thank you for your time and I really appreciate you guys considering recreational cannabis in the town.
Thank you for keeping your comments brief and appreciate it, Mr. Mujo. Rochelle, I'm going to let you pick these people.
Okay, thanks. I don't see any more hands on the screen. Jeff has his, but I see, I know I've got David Winslow waving at me. So David, unmute yourself. Can you unmute yourself? There you go. Okay, so you can talk to the planning commission and I'll go to you next.
Thank you very much. My name is David Winslow. I teach history at Sonora High School and life skills. I've been a teacher and a resident here for twenty-three years. And in teaching life skills and the students, we often talk about drug use and marijuana use. And a lot of the students seem to be under the impression that as adults use marijuana more and more, that it's okay for them to use marijuana also. And I've seen a lot of my own personal students suffer by use of marijuana. Their grades go down, their motivation goes down and it causes a lot of unseen costs. I know that the big move here is to get more income for the city. But what we don't see is that we're going to have to have more support in schools. We're going to have more people losing jobs. These are statistics that bear out across every community that legalizes marijuana. And those costs are not really track, trackable. I can tell you personally that my own children walking home from school have been approached.
We lost him.
Lost your transmission, sir.
I think that making recreational use marijuana in Sonora is sending the wrong message to our children. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for keeping your comments brief and, and right on, right on track.
So now we're going to go to Anaya Kirk, please. You can go ahead and speak.
Thank you, guys. I think when I'm done, if you guys are okay with it, letting David finish that story about his kids walking home sounded interesting. I have two questions and then I'll give you my spiel. The two questions would be, if there's three permits, someone like Mr. Jeff Muozio, would he, under one permit, be able to open up other satellite offices? So that's one, one question. The other question is, do you guys have an email that I can send you some data right now? If you could provide that email at the end, that would be great. So I could forward you this. But again, like David said, this whole conversation centers around money. It centers around revenue. And the, the data which I would like to share with you guys, I'd like to email you tonight, it comes from our very own summary that was done 2019-20. It's the CHKS summary results. It's Topeka County School Data Collection. And there's a couple of PowerPoints I want to share with you guys. But it talks about marijuana use in grade five, 0%. But grade seven, 11%. Grade nine, 24%. Grade 11, 42%. And then it jumps up to 42, up to 70% use. When we're talking about substance abuse, again, there's another indicator in the D days, 6% for grade seven, 16% for grade nine, 25% for grade 11. And then after that, it jumps up to 42. And then for lifelong use, so this is what the industry wants, is lifelong use. In Topeka County, when you start in grade 11, or grade seventh, grade 11, when we start in grade ninth, ninth grade, we have 25. And grade 11, 42%. So again, my, my whole spiel, and you guys know where I stand on this. You've heard me very well on the board, is there are some things where we really need revenue. We really need to fight for it because, you know, we're a small rural county. And absolutely, we need to get where we, we need to get every revenue we can wherever we can. But when it comes to our kids, when it comes to the future of the kids of Topeka County who are going to be here, working here, raising families here, I don't think there's $1 amount or value that can replace what it is we're, we're subjecting our kids to. It's already hard enough to make it in this culture. But with these kids walking by more, more shops, with there being more access just in, I mean, there, there's so many studies. If you guys haven't done your research, it's, it's sad. But there's so much research out there that simply the more access there is, it's inevitable there's going to be more usage. So my hope is that this conversation would be about the impact it's going to have on our kids. You know, we, we do have a shop, Jeff does. He is able to sell out of there. And I think that's more than enough to support the needs of Topeka County. So again, I thank you guys. And I didn't mean to be critical, but if, if you really could do some research on the impacts this is going to have on our kids locally, I, I think it would, I would hopefully change their minds. So yeah, have a great night and.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Rochelle, I can, I can answer the question regarding the number of locations. So the way that the ordinance is drafted, the goal is to limit the number of storefronts to three. So as an example, if Mr. Muozio did want to open up a different location, that would be a separate development agreement, a different project. The project right now is, it's one storefront. And so the ordinance is drafted to cap it at three. And that, again, was based off of the direction from the council that while the council is supportive of trying to explore options for expansion of some cannabis projects, it's not a complete open door to all projects and, and maybe an over concentration of these types of operations in the city. So it's literally just three storefronts for dispensaries, three businesses for manufacturing, and three businesses for testing.
Thank you. And do you guys have an email I could send you this data?
I would send it to the city administrator. You can contact, or you can contact her by email and it's on the website. I can give that to you tomorrow. You can give us a holler.
Yes, I'll pull that.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll pull it up on the website.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Rochelle.
So I think Mel, did you want to say something, Mel? I saw your hand go up. Hello, Mel. Oh, there you go. He's unmuted himself. Mel Kirk would be next.
Yeah, I do. And thank you for having me. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Cool. Thank you for having an opportunity for the, for the public to, to speak. My name is Mel Kirk. I'm, I live up here in Meawak Village. However, I own a building in downtown Sonora and I operate several businesses in Topeka County. Some are very local, some are very international and global. I have friends, both younger and older than I, who use recreational marijuana products. And I have not yet seen any public benefit resulting from this use. However, I do see these people are becoming, I would say, lazy and irresponsible. And it might not be so bad for like a doctor or a lawyer or somebody who's established and successful. But for younger people, this is turning into a real problem. And I can see this in the job market and trying to get people who are younger, who should be motivated, energetic employees, or even entrepreneurs who should be starting businesses. They're, instead, they're exchanging their time for getting high and chilling, as, you know, quote unquote, they call it. So I do believe that the short-term boost in revenue for the city is going to surely end up in a long-term loss in tax revenue. And as we lose young adults in minors, and don't try to pretend that this won't trickle down to minors because we all know it will, and I think we've already heard on, in this meeting that it does. You know, these people could have been innovators. They could have created companies. They could be really, really contributing to society. But instead, they're becoming consumers of products that will make them unproductive. And, you know, there's a lot of bad things starting to happen in Sonora. I mean, we had, just had a murder of a 17-year-old. We, we have decreased property values, increasing homelessness and economic impacts from COVID. And I really don't see how adding more recreational drugs to our local economy and local scene is going to help mitigate any of those issues. And there's a whole bunch of research, a study was just quoted from, you know, Colorado that just suggests that this is going to make it worse. So I just hope, hope that we really evaluate what, what this is and what this means to our future and to our younger generation who, you know, frankly, it's harder and harder for them to be motivated to work, to, to see a future, to see anything bright. And they just get sucked into this stuff and that's all they end up doing. So I'm happy to talk more about my own experience as a business owner and how this is affecting the local workforce if you ever need me to. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kirk. Next up.
I'm looking to see, is there anybody else? I'm not seeing any hands. If you want to speak, you can.
How about on the phone?
You're on the phone? Okay, is that 0835?
Yes.
Okay, you are welcome to speak.
Okay, yeah. So I'm, I'm Bob Kirk. And thank you for letting me share my concern about allowing recreational marijuana sales. I believe that it will be detrimental to the health, safety, and general welfare of the community and the county. The marijuana industry is pumping millions of dollars into promoting the supposed benefits and doing everything possible to bury the extremely toxic effects on people and society as a whole. In the presentation, there is, I didn't hear any research about these, you know, any efforts to understand these toxic effects. The Rocky Mountain High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Organization, that's a mouthful, just released their latest report about Colorado. And the bad news just keeps getting worse. Everything from more marijuana-related traffic deaths to almost doubling the suicide rate where people have positive marijuana toxicology results. A recreational marijuana shop just makes it all the more easy for young people to access marijuana. The younger people are, when they start, the more likely they are to become addicted and to transition to harder drugs. So please, please, please protect the health, safety, and general welfare of our community by not approving the resolution before you. Thank you for listening.
Thanks for keeping your comments brief. Next up, Rochelle.
So it looks like we have somebody sharing a screen here and her name is Daska. Is that correct? Or Daska?
That's correct. Thank you.
Yes, you are, you need to speak to the planning commissioner.
Thank you. My name is Daska Babcock and I live here in Sonora. I have a freshman at Sonora High School and a sixth grader at Sonora L. Both have been peripherally exposed to marijuana through peers. And the, the greater availability that will inevitably come from having recreational sales happening in town can only harm people who are my child age and younger. The, once the product is out there in the community, it will trickle down and out and, and, and be more and more accessible to children who are going to be very adversely affected by it. They're also already being adversely affected by the notion that smoking marijuana is just fine for young people. If, if people who are their parents' age do it, then there's nothing wrong with them doing it. And I think that we're going to have a real uphill battle in countering that cultural belief. We do not need to compound it by having recreational sales happening in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
So I'm looking on the screen here. And for anybody that hasn't spoke previously, and I'm not seeing any hands raised. I'm not seeing, at the bottom of your screen, Jeff, I see that, but you've already spoke once. So let, I'm not sure what the chairman's, because if we open it up to one, then everybody gets to speak again. Normally, we limit everybody to one. We have, nobody else looking at me and waving their hands. I see no other hands raised. So again, if you are on your computer, at the bottom of your screen, you can raise your hand. And that lets us know that you want to speak. Or unmute yourself and put the video on so we can see that you want to speak. I'm not seeing any of that from the other people that are on the screen. If you are on the phone, it's, Nubia, is it star nine?
It is. If you're calling on your phone, you can raise your hand digitally if you press star nine.
Thank you. I see now a phone number by the end with the last four digits of 126, 1626 has raised their hand. You are welcome to speak, but you're going to need to unmute yourself because right now you have yourself muted. Nubia, how do they unmute on the phone?
Star five. I believe mute is star five on your phone.
Okay, so hit star five to unmute yourself. And then you can speak. And that's with the phone number ending in 1626. Let me see. I don't think I can unmute you. You've got your hand.
I believe it's actually star six.
Star six. Try star six.
Okay, can you? Gosh, can you hear me now?
You're on. Go ahead.
Okay, my name is David Peters. My name's David Peters. I've been a counselor for over 40 years. I've seen results even recently of marijuana, it's kids who shouldn't have it available to them. Probably my biggest problem is that for years, we had kids making ribbon signs on the school fences, "Don't do drugs." And now we're rushing, rushing to, to give them drugs and to put drugs into the community. And you don't think they're not going to get a hold of them? Because I've seen it in my councilees many times. We have a pilot program that's one dispensary. And we have no information to base that success on. If you're going to have a pilot program, it should be both of those dispensaries for a year or two before we go rushing into another phase of it. And if, even if you do okay it, I would, I would recommend that you charge them the $10,000 twice because you're giving them two businesses to conduct. So there shouldn't be any reason that they should get both of those stores under one fee. And I just have a real problem exposing more of our kids to this kind of situation. I think, I don't know what the big rush is. I know it's money, money, money. Everybody thinks they're going to get money from this. And you're going to pay more in the cost of, of personal and emotional trauma than you're going to reap the benefit of from money. And I don't see, I don't see why it's important that we sell our souls to get the bottom line of money in our communities. And I don't see the rush, slow down and look at it, let the pilot program go through. We haven't had a pilot program report that I'm aware of. So that should be considered first. They all put it in as a pilot program. Oh, well, we're evaluated, then we'll go on from there. It hadn't been evaluated. Just a comment that, oh, it's working okay. Well, who knows if it's working okay? Nobody's talked about it. Anyway, I highly recommend as a counselor that we don't expose more of our kids and look like more hypocrites than we already have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Peters. Next up, if anybody else would like to speak, either on the.
If you're on your phone, hit star nine. If you are just on your computer, you can hit the button that's a hand raised. And I think, other than Jeff Muozio, but Mr. Chairman, if you open that up for him to speak again, then you have to provide an opportunity for all the people that spoke to speak again as well.
I, I really don't want to encourage a debate amongst meeting participants or the public just based on rebuttal and comments. I think you've had your shot. You've, you've said it. I think we've received enough information. So I'd rather keep it just to one, one opportunity per, per person in the public.
So Ben, just because I'm new at this, if anybody is out there that hasn't spoke, please unmute yourself and you can say something so that we make sure we don't miss you. I'm not hearing anybody and I'm not seeing anybody and nobody's sending me anything because I've been getting text messages on what I'm doing wrong here. So I think, I think we're all good. So that we.
Rochelle, I'm going to close the public hearing. Thank you very much for participating, ladies and gentlemen. It was good commentary. And now bring this back to the commission.
I will let you know that Nubia is still on the line. As you know, Mary Rose is not. So she is available to answer any other questions that you guys might have about the ordinance and how things would move forward from here. Staff is recommending under, on Mary Rose's staff report, a recommended approval. But those are your options. You can recommend approval to the city council or you can recommend denial. Either way, it'll move forward to the council for their final consideration. Anything you need to add, what I just, what I just said, Nubia?
No, I think we're, I think that covered it pretty well. The one thing I'll remind the, the planning commission is, in terms of the policy, whether to allow medicinal or adult-use cannabis as an allowable product to be sold in the city, is really what's encapsulated in the regulatory ordinance, which is the ordinance that staff provided for your context and for rear review. But isn't, that is not before the planning commission tonight. So while it does play a part in the larger discussion about zoning, zoning is really the issue that we're presenting to you tonight for consideration. And whether or not expanding these, this use for recreational cannabis and also making adjustments to medicinal in, in terms of the different locations around the city. So that's, that's really what the focus of the ordinance is tonight. And that's what you'll be presenting a recommendation to the city council.
Nubia, along that line, and the planning commission really is taking action on whether to adopt the resolution pertaining to amending the zone and the zones per, to expand the current ordinance that we have, isn't that right?
Yes. So the planning commission makes the recommendation via a resolution. Then the, the ordinance is then presented to the city council for the city council to look at making the change to the, the zoning. And also, the council will be considering the second accompanying ordinance, which adjusts the numbers for the dispensaries, manufacturing, and testing, as well as opening it up to adult use. which adjusts the numbers for the dispensaries, manufacturing and testing, as well as opening it up to adult use in addition to medicinal.
So then should the, should the commission take action tonight to say oppose amending the, the current ordinance to expand it to three permits, including recreational? All we have to do is just say, we're just not going to vote on, just say we deny the resolution?
So again, and that's why I want the commission to focus on that. You're, you're not, that's not before you tonight. So the issue of the three, the three dispensaries, manufacturing and testing is not in an ordinance that you are voting on tonight. You are strictly looking at zoning. So what the planning commission wishes to do with a zoning ordinance, that is within your purview and whether or not you can recommend it or not. We're not talking about adult use and we're not talking about the number of businesses. That is, that is strictly within the city council's purview. So if, if you are largely concerned about policy-wise about opening it up, then that's something that you can take or you can present to the council individually when the council considers it. But through this action tonight, we're only talking about zoning. Zoning is strictly what's before you tonight.
Mr. Jensen has a question.
Well, just to clarify, we're only voting tonight on zoning to say, okay, it's okay to change the zoning. So possibly they could have the sale of recreational marijuana. So we're not making any other decision than that. When does that decision be made? Who makes that decision? Is the state later on, are they going to change the law in California that all counties have to have recreation? Is that the way I understand it?
Not, no, not at, so, no, not at all. So this, the state, the state has, through Prop 64, the voters in essence have allowed for local agencies, local jurisdictions like the city to regulate cannabis. And the city has the ability to prohibit all recreational medicinal cannabis of all types. And that's within the purview of what the voters adopted and what they approved. The city council in previous years established the pilot program to test the waters to see if, if cannabis sales within the medicinal context could work in Sonora. And so they did that and that's the, that's the policy that they set forth and that we've carried out as staff. So you're looking at zoning because that's what the planning commission looks at and considers. The city council will ultimately consider the ordinance to adopt, to allow for additional numbers of businesses and to allow for adult use. And as Mary Rose stated, that is something that they'll be getting. So they'll be getting two ordinances. You only get one because zoning is really that, within the scope of your, the parameters of your jurisdiction. The city council will get both. They'll get the planning, your recommendation on the zoning ordinance and then the other ordinance, which is the regulatory ordinance, which changes the numbers and allows for expanded uses. Now, I don't believe that there is any move at the state label, level to mandate or require counties or local jurisdictions to allow all kinds of cannabis uses. And frankly, that type of legislation would be contradictory to Prop 64. Prop 64 was very clear in that the voter said, you know, we like the idea of expanding and allowing for, you know, recreational sales, but it's really up to the local jurisdiction to decide if they want to allow it or not. And so those are the parameters that we're, we're working in right now.
So one more thing, if I understand right, the city council has the final say on whether we have recreational marijuana or is it put up to the voters this time?
No, the city, the city council can make that determination and that's, that's written into state law. The city council can regulate, they can completely ban it, they can, they can allow it with restrictions. So if you look at different cities around the state, there's a whole framework, myriad of frameworks of how cities approach cannabis. And so there's been plenty who have banned it entirely. There have been other cities that have allowed it entirely. Most cities take a little bit of an in-between stance and they may allow some uses, but not all. Or like Sonora, that then maybe they'll allow just medicinal. Others are restrictive as to the number of maybe dispensaries, but they feel comfortable with that being manufactured. So there's a whole variety of ways that each jurisdiction, each city and county can regulate cannabis within its, within its boundaries. So it, it is not something that's required to go to voters.
I'm confident that tonight's meeting of the, of the commission will, will be able to send the council a clear message on, well, how we feel about this.
Yes, and you, and you can do that based off of the vote that you take on the recommended ordinance tonight. That is correct.
One question, just to clarify clearly. In other words, if we vote down on the zone, we're sending a message that we're not in favor of recreational marijuana. That's starting the ball rolling, right?
You could make that as part of your, your action. So if your, if your decision is to, conceptually, there's a few things you could do there. From a staff perspective, because we have a pending action, our recommendation is if you're going to do that, there should be a motion and action to, to reject the ordinance or to deny the ordinance. And as part of that action, you can make whatever statements or findings you desire. But I want the planning commission to be clear on this will, staff will be taking this to city council. So it doesn't mean that it dies here. It does move forward. We will present it to the council and the council will have the ability to, to move forward with it if they so choose to.
Good, good question, John. All right, thank you very much, Nubia.
Thank you.
Gentlemen.
I have, I would like to speak if I may. The first thing, recreational marijuana just completely leaves me cold because why can't people in this world, families in this society find other ways to have fun and enjoy recreational activities rather than sit back and smoke or use cannabis, number one. Number two, it slowly is, has destroying and is destroying our youth as our people have come in with their comments. We have a homeless situation in this country that's out of control that I think could be pointed directly to people that got on drugs, families got on drugs, marijuana, all starting in directions of cannabis, marijuana and then drug addiction. Families break up. Society is hurting with the homeless. It's going to create more addiction as we have already heard from some very fine people that have given their message, counselors. Addiction, what are we doing in this country now? It's obviously not going to get less. Sixty-five thousand people a year die of drug overdoses in this country. It starts many times, just like people, young people get started. It's in the house. The families or the dad and the mom are using it. And so, ooh, there's something in the drawer. What's that? Let's try it. Okay, it's going to be more around the society or in the house. We got traffic accidents. How does a police officer check someone that's high just on marijuana? We have people dying in auto accidents from alcohol use. Now we got marijuana out there. It causes heart disease. It causes lung cancer. It causes mental disorders, as mentioned, suicides. The whole concept here, there's, it just, I can't buy into it. It's destroying our country. We've got drugs. You can get it. You can get other sources of alcohol and use for getting high and being happy. But to me, as I'm going with what I heard from the public, from the input, they don't like it. They don't think it's right. And I don't think it's right either. It's just going to add on to the problem, make it easier for our youth. Right now, we're trying to get our youth straightened out. They're having enough trouble in school now because they can't even go to school. So what else are they going to do? Sit around and have a little cannabis and grass and can't go to school? So what else am I going to do? Just adds to the problem. So that's my feeling about this idea. I'm against the zoning acceptance.
Thank you, John. Sure.
I found a study that was done at the University of Colorado Medical School and it's called diverted medical marijuana use among teens. What they did, they surveyed 164 teens aged 14 to 18 in two adolescent substance abuse treatment programs in Denver about their use of medical marijuana. The investigators found that 74% of the teens used marijuana that was recommended for someone an average of 50 times. Compared with teens who did not use medical marijuana, those who did began using the drug regularly at a younger age and were also more dependent on marijuana and showed more symptoms of conduct disorder, et cetera. The researchers pointed out, however, that most of the teens believe the drug comes with little or no risk because recent state and federal policy changes have opened doors for more legalized medical marijuana use in Colorado. The researchers suggested that teens using medical marijuana most likely got it from an adult with a valid registry identification card for the drug. So medical marijuana is being sold to somebody and then guess where it might go after that?
Right.
That's never going to change. Alcohol, cigarettes.
Yeah. If you, if you, if you provide alcohol to a teen, you get trouble. So what, what they're saying is the medical marijuana industry needs to figure this out and deal with it.
Good points. I, I mean, I was a teenager at one time. I know exactly what, to what lengths I did to, went to, 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 to get high, whatever, whether it be alcohol or, or anything. But I'll tell you what, I think this city has taken extraordinary measures to accommodate the medical cannabis industry for the, on the basis of it being medicine. That's how, that's how I was, I wouldn't say I was sold on the idea, but I, I, for it being medicine, for people that needed cannabis as medicine. And I, I, I tell you what, ladies and gentlemen, I'm suspicious that at any time you then all of a sudden inject or allow a recreational aspect to then permeate a, a medical industry, you might as well just flush the medical card. It's not even necessary anymore.
Katie, bar the door. Door's open.
You just, you just bypassed all the legitimate reasons why people would need to use the substance. So I, I have a problem with this myself to allow this on.
They're going to get it if they want it. Thrive 14 miles away from here and they'll get it.
Yeah.
But we don't have to be the ones.
We don't have to be the ones that didn't allow.
And look at to your people, what we, the people that called in here that have, were adamant about their concerns, especially the council. Yeah.
Our teachers and our.
Yeah, they're dealing with our kids.
People who are kids, they're, they're building our kids' character.
Right. One other thing I'd like to add.
But we only have Nubia for a very short amount of time. So if you want to frame your, whoever's going to make a motion with her assistance, as she was talking to you guys earlier about, we probably, I don't, like I said, I don't mean to rush, but she has another meeting that she has to get on in a very short amount of time.
Well, it's, I'd like to hear from all the commissioners first and maybe they'll be brief and Nubia can hang around for an extra minute or two.
I will hang out as long as, as necessary, but thank, thank you, Rochelle, for, for that because I do, I do have to hop off as well too. Unfortunately, Mary Rose and I were double booked today.
Sure, you know, listening to all this, it's, it's the same thing that I've heard for 30 plus years. It's this doom and gloom of, of we're going to kill children and we're going to ruin their lives. And it, for the past 30 years, I just have not seen that. So I'd like to know what year your study is from?
University of Colorado Medical School.
What year?
This year.
This year?
Yeah.
State of Colorado put out that teens are using it less. It's not necessarily glamorous anymore. It's not necessarily something that they want to do. It's something that they've interviewed these teenagers and said they'll wait. I, I just, I see a lot of kind of fear mongering and, and I just, it's not what I see in reality.
Well, we all grew up in that time that a lot of drugs were being done and we're all sitting here. So I'm not saying that any of you did any of that.
Times have changed a little bit in the last five years. The whole situation with coronavirus now has created a complete upside down in our educational system. How are we going to get our kids educated and to create more potential? I have a young boy that I work with. I know, I train him in a gymnasium. He's 17. He said, you can't believe what kids out at Sonora High are using right now. They're trying to get anything they can to get high. He said, he mentioned some things I've never heard of, plus he said marijuana. He says, it's just automatic. And this is our society, our youth growing up. I, I've heard enough to hear those people that are involved. I am impressed with what they're saying. They're asking us not to do this. I just, recreation, that word hurts me. There's something, you can do other things, but anyway. It's, there's medical problems. There's lung cancer, cancer, heart disease, mental problems, suicides. Look at our homeless. Go downtown tonight and look who's walking through town. I bet you if you traced where they came from, what happened to their moms and dads, I'm sure they were involved with some type of drug use at one time and they just said, I'm out of here. So that's another problem. End of story. Thank you.
We'd like to make a motion. To do what?
Disapprove.
Okay, can you be, can you be a little more specific?
To disapprove.
No, you're going to recommend.
The zoning change.
Sorry, if you're going to recommend denial of the ordinance that's before you. Nubia, do they need to go beyond that?
Yeah, so, okay, so let me, let me, what we're doing is it has to be by the, the resolution. The resolution is what's before you tonight. So if you're looking at denying it, it would be a motion to deny resolution number 10-13-2020-A. And that's basically the action that you'd have to take.
Which effectively.
With, with what she said. Now, if they want to say because of their concerns related to recreational, the recreational use of cannabis in the city, should they include that in the resolution or in the motion as well, Nubia?
Yes, because in that, that, that motion of vote is what staff will take and present to the council.
Okay, so do you want us to say that?
So it was basically amended by saying denying the expansion of the current ordinance to accommodate recreational marijuana. Would that be good with you?
Yeah.
Yes. Could, could we say that we're concerned of the recreational usage is going to create more problems for our youth? Is that the one?
Oh, we're getting pretty subjective here. I think if we, as a land use thing alone and denying the resolution, I think that's.
I think they got the message. They got the message.
You got that down, Rochelle?
Chris, can you say that one more time for me? I'm sorry.
On the amendment, to amend the motion to, to say that, that we do not seek to amend the cannabis business program to expand and its zoning to expand the permit process to a third permit to allow for recreational use.
So allow recreational use.
That sends a message.
That would be the motion. Who would like to second that?
Can I ask you, can I ask Nubia a question real quick? So there's kind of two issues going on. One is the recreational with the dispensaries. And really under the zoning, the only thing that's a change on that is that on, when the council be considering going from recreation, medical to recreational in the definition. On the planning commission side, there's the, really the two things that are being changed are for manufacturing and testing to allow it within the commercial zone with a use permit, which has nothing to do with the recreational at all because it's all tied to a use. Correct, Nubia?
That is correct. So, so yes, the, the ordinance that the planning commission can make a recommendation on is strictly just for zoning. So it, the motion to deny it takes care of that administrative component. But if, if it's the planning commission's desire to tack on that additional language as part of the motion, then, then, then that's fine. But the effect, the effect is still the same. Staff will. But the effect, the effect is still the same. Staff will move this ordinance forward for the city council's consideration, but we will let them know of your, your, your action, which essentially is to reject the zoning code ordinance.
And then we just need a second.
John Richardson's second.
Oh, sorry.
As a man.
Yes, vote.
A yes vote would be denying the resolution. Any other discussion? I really appreciate everybody's comments, feedback on this.
It's a serious thing. I think it's really something to think about.
I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion. Okay. We'll do a roll call vote. Start out with this for yours. Hi. Mr. Richardson.
Hi.
Garnon, I. Anderson, no.
Okay. Take that on to the city council for Nubia.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for all those made comments and participated in this discussion. Moving on to discussion items, community developer directors report. Rochelle.
Great. Thank you. Sorry that everybody had to jump on and off tonight. Guys, we had a lot of duplicates because Tuesdays are, when we go to a Tuesday meeting sometimes, but a lot of people have other commitments. So but I'm here till the end. So we, I just wanted to let you know that we do have a November meeting. Right now, we have one small item. Probably won't be too long of a meeting and that is all that I have at this point, but things are subject to change. I wanted to let you know too, that the tenant improvement building permit has been issued for the Wilco store. So that's really good news because it'll be nice to see them get in and start doing their tenant improvements. Right now, up till now, what you guys have been seeing are the facade improvements that are being done by the shopping center owner. Now we have the tenant in doing, starting on their work. So it'll be nice to see that store get up and running and open. Also want to let you know that we have a lot of new businesses that are starting to pop up in our downtown that are filling up some of the vacancies. And we encourage everybody to get out and support our local businesses. Tough time for everybody and we're excited to see new businesses and our old businesses that have been able to hang in. So hopefully everybody keeps that in mind as we get into the holiday season. And as COVID restrictions have been lightening some, it's allowed, you know, for some of the businesses to have a little bit more flexibility. And then just for, just for you guys to know, farmers market closes in a couple of weeks. So if you want any of your produce or anything on the twenty-fourth, it will be done for, and we'll put it away for another year. So, but it made it through the COVID year. So and that's all that I have for you guys tonight. Unless you guys have any questions for me.
I love the streets being closed with the restaurant. I love that outdoor feeling. It just, it makes you feel like you can go to dinner.
Well, it's a real community thing too.
Sonora's done really well responding to a tough thing. I mean, they're really hung in there.
Depth built out on the street now in front of restaurants.
It's kind of really nice. They opened the door to a new kind of dining in the spring and summer.
Yeah.
Tough people.
Well, your heart goes out to those guys for what they've had to endure. If there's no other business I'd vote to, I'd move to adjourn.
A lot of friends are gonna read how I voted.
Don't feel bad, Ron.
Now I need.
No, the first thing you want to do is make sure you're not, when you start working, you don't feel.